Welcome back. Bombshell. The January 6th Committee held its ninth public hearing this Thursday, revealing some new testimony and details about what was going on in the White House in the lead up to the riot, how even President Trump might have admitted that he lost the 2020 election, and the hearing concluded with a surprising subpoena. We'll talk about what they revealed today, why this matters, and how this affects the news cycle. Plus, in this week's midterm watch, we'll talk about two major races in this year's midterm cycle, the Pennsylvania and Wisconsin Senate races. We'll talk about who's in the lead, the politics of it, and what it means for the balance of power. Today, October 12th, 2022. From Eshon Media, this is the Eshon S. Show, a podcast about the interesting and ever-changing world of American politics, with me, your host, Eshon. Welcome back. Thank you so much for joining us this nice October Friday. Politics has taken a weird shape recently. We've shifted from being in the constant unpredictability craziness to a more mundane, stale, and boring environment. For people like myself that cover politics, it was a little concerning when we started to see this shift, or shift, excuse me, late in August. When I kept seeing the same headlines cycling over and over again, I kept thinking, what's going on? Like, this isn't right. I'm not used to seeing this. My listeners aren't used to seeing this. People in DC aren't used to seeing this. What is going on? But as time has gone on, we are once again shifting back into the normal crazy of American politics. Now, I know I sound like a person that likes the craziness of American politics, and it's not that I enjoy the craziness. It's more that I think it's important, it's more indicative of the actual importance of politics, because politics is at its core about people. And so when you are seeing a very boring and mundane environment where it's just the same controversial stories cycling through, that's when you know nothing is really happening. And when, so when politics slows down, good or otherwise bad, we are not seeing anything occur. And it depends on your view of the issue, whether or not it's good or bad. But when politics slows down, when the cycles slow, that's when you know that nothing meaningful is being done for you. And it's not like it becomes boring as an, oh, we're passing this policy, that's why we're really boring right now. It's just that nothing important is being done. And with politics, that's an expectation that you are getting important things done as often as you can. But anyway, we have shifted back into our normal set of politics. We have returned to some more spontaneity, and we are entering back, and especially as we're kicking into the midterms, we are seeing the shift back to normal. And so that's why I am really excited that we came back at the right time, now that I think about it, for season three. We didn't come back in that time where there were no stories to talk about. We are now back in a time where, yes, things are happening, especially in the lead up to the midterms. And that's what we're going to be covering in today's episode, and I'm sure in the next few episodes, and probably for a while. But anyway, that's my little monologue for today. Let's take a look at some of this week's biggest stories. So our first story takes us to LA, where the city council there has been in turmoil amidst some major controversy with their council president. A few days ago, a leak surfaced of Council President Nuri Martinez making some incendiary racist remarks about another council member's family while talking to two other members of the LA political community. The leak, what happened after it, is the leak basically sparked some huge backlash against Martinez, who initially did not resign from her post and rather stayed on. She faced a lot of calls to step down from the presidency, but also just from her post. But she did not for a few days. But then, as those calls intensified, becoming more scrutinizing, when it started coming from people like Mayor Eric Garcetti and the two people running to be the next mayor of LA to replace him, and from multiple members of Congress, Martinez ended up resigning from the presidency of the council, but she still maintained her seat there. And then, calls grew on Wednesday from more prominent politicians like California Senator Dianne Feinstein, and even President Biden. These people called on her to resign from her seat because she could not, they felt that she could not stay on. Eventually, Martinez resigned from her seat on the council. This story sparked a lot of headlines this week, and we were really paying close attention to it. So that was some news out of LA. Former Democratic Representative Tulsi Gabbard announced that she was leaving the Democratic Party after nearly two years of being estranged from the party and its policies. Gabbard has come out to be one of the most prominent home critics of the Democratic Party, and she has consistently called out the Biden administration for what, in her view, she sees as a violation of American values, and she's branded the Democrat Party as being a party of elitists that do not represent the American people. So she had been doing that for quite a while, so it wasn't really a huge surprise when Gabbard started to embrace the right wing of politics a little more, a little more than, a little to further extent than what previous people in her position have, making the waves on Fox News Primetime for hosts like Jesse Waters, Sean Hannity, and frequently on Tucker Carlson's show. And she spoke at CPAC earlier this year, if that wasn't a big giveaway. Now, while most people aren't surprised with this departure, what is notable is that just three years ago, Tulsi Gabbard was on a debate stage, a DNC sanctioned debate stage, with Kamala Harris, Joe Biden, and Bernie Sanders arguing about how she best represented the Democratic Party. And of all the top contenders for the Democratic nomination of the top 20 or 25, Tulsi Gabbard was the last Democrat to stay on right before Bernie Sanders dropped out. So it's really impressive to see how she has made such a defect and shift in just such a minute amount of time to the right. It's amazing to have watched it happen, and now that she's quit the Democratic Party, it's all coming to fruition. It's why I branded her as one of the most talented political actors in American politics right now, because pulling off something like that, like a full 180 of that sort, it's not something you see. And it's not like she hasn't held a lot of the views that she has right now, some of the new views that she's revealing. She has held them, and it's in the record, or it's on the record, but it's still hard to make that type of shift. So I'd say it really owes to her political talent that she managed to switch sides like that. And while she hasn't declared any party affiliation yet, I think we're all looking at the GOP, who would most definitely welcome her with open arms, due to her newfound fame in the party. I mean, this is a former Democratic presidential candidate who endorsed Biden that now regrets doing so and is embracing the right. Could she be a candidate in the future? Her old house seat in Hawaii, Senator, maybe even a dark horse candidate for president? Well, we'll need to wait and watch. All right, some news from the January 6th Committee. Just before recording this episode on Thursday, the January 6th Committee concluded its ninth public hearing. Now, because of this happening, I had to change things up quite a bit for today's script. The plan was to only dedicate this episode to midterm watch, but then after listening to today's hearing, I really thought maybe it shouldn't have been in those top headlines that I talk about in the beginning, but rather, it has to be its own episode topic. After giving it another thought, I wrote it into the script, and so today, the January 6th Committee's ninth public hearing is a headliner topic. But that aside, the January 6th Committee met. For my friends who don't know why January 6th was such a big deal, I implore you to listen to every Eshon S. Show episode on the matter, anywhere you listen to podcasts. We have been covering this topic extensively here on the show, and there are so many little tidbits of testimony, of, and clips of January 6th Committee members talking about it, a little more of a review of what happened that day. There's a lot that you can be listening to that are in previous episodes from both season one and season two, so I suggest you go take a listen to those. But anyway, this public, and televised hearing is the first public hearing that the committee held since July 21st, when they last met. That hearing was designed to be a season finale of sorts, because it concluded the committee's core investigation public hearing into what happened, and their summer hearings. It kind of encompassed all the major points that they plan on putting in their report and in their recommendations to Congress as the fundamental issues that caused the riots. They concluded the summer hearings, talking about how Trump and his inner circle, talking about how they were operating for the 187 minutes that they weren't speaking to the public. Now insert today's hearing. Today's hearing is the last public hearing that the committee plans on holding before the midterms. So it matters a whole lot what kind of information they revealed, especially because we are now less than four weeks out from the midterms. Democrats have tried to turn this topic, and actually Republicans as well now, have tried to turn January 6th, for Republicans, that's the committee's work, and for Democrats, that's the event of the day, into major talking points and major issues for this year's midterms. Because remember, whoever wins control of Congress this year is going to be certifying, is going to have, probably have a big part in the certification process of the 2024 election. And for Democrats, they say they don't want to see a repeat of what happened in 2020. For Republicans, it's going to be about investigating the integrity of the January 6th Committee. So let's break this hearing down piece by piece. Now, so the first piece of information that the committee revealed was that President Trump might have actually believed that he lost the 2020 election, but purposely denied it as a means to stay in office. Now, that's actually very interesting to hear, because President Trump, as much, as far as he was, he's been telling his supporters, genuinely believes that he won the election and that it was stolen from him, as he says it. But testimony from a former administration official, Cassidy Hutchinson, revealed that former White House Chief of Staff Mark Meadows had relayed anecdotes to her about how President Trump admitted his own loss. She recalled him saying in an exchange, quote, "No, Cass, you know he knows it's over. He knows he lost, but we're going to keep trying," end quote. And she even revealed the discussion she witnessed where President Trump said, quote, "I don't want people to know we lost, Mark. This is embarrassing. Figure it out. We need to figure it out. I don't want people to know that we lost," end quote. This is probably the biggest news from today's hearing, and it really speaks to the confusion and ensuing chaos in the White House that led to the January 6 riots. Now, if it's true that the president actually acknowledged defeat, then that gives a lot of points to the committee, which has been trying to establish that President Trump willingly and knowingly caused the riot. The next big piece of testimony came from President Trump's former Secretary of Transportation, Elaine Chao, who happens to be the wife of Senate Minority Leader Mitch McConnell. She resigned from the Trump administration the day after the riot, directly in response, or rather, in protest to the riot. She said that she could no longer stay in the administration because of her, quote, "personal values." When Chao resigned, I remember it came amid the rumors at the time that there was at least a reported failed attempt of at least some members of the cabinet to invoke the 25th Amendment. And for my friends who don't know, the 25th Amendment would, section four of it, would basically allow the cabinet, which is the president's group of advisors, to eject the president from office if a majority of members and the vice president agree with doing so. And so there were a lot of reports and rumors from January 7th, and then the few days after, about serious discussions being held, at least between some members of the cabinet, about removing President Trump from office. And then you saw this resignation come, as well as from Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos. It really, really made you think. Her statement was also included after President Trump, on his social media platform Truth Social, went after her husband and referred to her, Elaine Chao, as Mitch McConnell's, quote, "China-loving wife," and used some inappropriate language to describe, rhetoric, rather, to describe the former transportation secretary. Another important segment from the hearings was about congressional leadership and their truly desperate and dire attempts and efforts to get the situation under control, but seemingly unsure of how to actually get that done, which in their view was because of a lack of cooperation from the federal government. There's a lot of video out there that the committee revealed, but the committee's main goal with these videos was to show how congressional leadership was not getting very much support from the federal government, because President Trump was at the head of all of this. There were clips of Speaker Nancy Pelosi talking to Governor Ralph Northam of Virginia, the governor of Virginia at the time, talking to Secretary of Defense, the Secretary of Defense at the time, the Acting Attorney General of the, at the time, and as well as Vice President Mike Pence. These people, and they're, as they described it, were kind of running the show at the time, and they were managing all of what the situation was unfolding. So that's what the committee wanted to show with those clips. But lastly, the biggest news to come out from this, from these hearings was not actually any evidence or testimony, but rather some official business of the committee. In a unanimous vote that they had alluded to doing in the beginning, the committee actually voted to subpoena President Trump to get him to testify. Now, that's a big deal. It's something the committee didn't want to do previously, and was rather wary of doing, actually, but today, they decided to subpoena him in order to, as Chairman Benny Thompson put it, because of the committee's, quote, "obligation to hear from Trump." This is really interesting, because rarely do you see a president, or even former president, get subpoenaed to testify. Now, for my friends who don't know, basically, a subpoena is an order that, an order of sorts, that mandates a person to come before a body, usually a court, but in this case, Congress, to testify against, on any case. Now, this is a bold step for the committee, I feel, because they are really jumping out of their comfort zone here, and they're making moves. But we probably aren't going to be hearing any testimony from President Trump anytime soon. He's expected to challenge the ruling in the courts and prolong any chances of him testifying before the committee finishes their work or gets shut down, should Republicans win the, win control of the House in November. But it'll be interesting to watch how they handle any sort of legal challenge from President Trump in the near future. All right, that was a look at our biggest story about the January 6th Committee's latest hearing. When we come back from the break, we'll start with midterm watch, and we'll talk about the Senate elections in Pennsylvania and Wisconsin. Don't go anywhere, we'll be right back after this short, short break. All right, we're back from the break. Welcome to this week's midterm watch. So as we've established, Democrats have been really struggling to increase their numbers in the House. It's not looking very bright for them at this time, especially because of the fact that inflation and foreign policy crises are really rampant right now, and they are dominating the news cycle for them, at least in coverage of them, and that's really turning out Republican voters. And so, looking at the House, there's a huge risk that Democrats lose control of it by upwards of 30, even 40 seats. We're expecting this year to be a red wave year. And so Democrats are really, really gloomy about their prospects for the next two years, especially if Republicans are controlling the House, because they can launch investigations under the presidency, under President Biden, as leader Kevin McCarthy has promised. They can, you know, they can block the passage of various sorts of bills that Democrats really wanted to do. So right now, their agenda is really on the line. Now, what would have really cooked the goose is if Democrats also lost control of the Senate. But actually, right now, as gloomy as it is for Democrats in the House, it's looking really bright for them in the Senate right now, and it's interesting to see this happen. Maybe it's because Senate, with the Senate, it's more of a state-by-state election, as opposed to more local voting in the House, but in the Senate, there are some really key races that are hinting at the Democrats' ability to actually expand on their majority. I know right now, the sentiment isn't very much in their favor, but there are two seats that I am looking at right now in the Senate that are at least going to be in huge contention, like, they are going to be the ones that everyone is watching across the country, because these two seats are, in my view, ultimately going to decide the power, balance of power. Now, for Republicans, they only need to win one of these seats, or retain one of these seats, in order to get a majority. For Democrats, their hope is to hold on to everything they got, but they also really want to expand on their majority, so that they can have a more, they can have a more filibuster, not filibuster-proof majority, but a more operating-issue-proof majority, because right now, because of Democratic senators like Kyrsten Sinema and Joe Manchin, it's becoming really hard to operate as a, as a conference in the Senate, and it's colluding with their ability to get things done, because, only because moderates like Joe Manchin and Kyrsten Sinema have to think a lot more about their votes that maybe senators from more blue states don't have to think about. So that's why winning two more seats might actually be very important for Democrats. So looking at it, maybe Republicans do have it a little easier if they only need to win one seat, but I would not bet all futures on that, because in a state like Pennsylvania right now, we're looking at Pennsylvania and Wisconsin today, let's look at Pennsylvania. So in Pennsylvania, I think I mentioned this in the season premiere last week, Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman is the Democrat running against Dr. Mehmet Oz in Pennsylvania. Now, many of you probably have heard of Dr. Oz, like, I mean, we've all talked about him, we all know who he is. So Dr. Oz is, was announced as candidacy in December of last year, I believe, and since then, wow, he's gained a lot of popularity amongst the Pennsylvania Republican electorate. And he's been really riding a high on that, because his numbers in the GOP have been looking very bright, and he was even endorsed by Donald Trump. So it really begged the question of how viable of a candidate Dr. Oz really was. And in comparison to the more liberal John Fetterman, it didn't really look like it was going to be a huge challenge for Oz to win. But then after, and for primary election day, around that time, and I do recall covering this on the show, Lieutenant Governor Fetterman actually suffered from a stroke. Now, thankfully, he's doing fine, but that really prompted questions about Fetterman's fitness to hold the office of Senator. Now, you'd think with all of these types of headlines, and with this type of situation, and in our political climate, and knowing that John Fetterman is a little more on the liberal side, you'd think that maybe, just maybe, Mehmet Oz might have had a bit of an easier time in this election. You would have thought that, but it turns out, he's not had, he's not been experiencing that same high with the general electorate. According to FiveThirtyEight, a polling firm that we love to use here at the Eshon S. Show, Dr. Oz, or rather, Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman is winning the state of Pennsylvania in most polls by six points, with 48.3% to Dr. Oz's 42.3%. That's a six-point difference, and in a swing state like Pennsylvania, that's always in contention, no matter what statewide election you're talking about, and presidential election too, no matter which one you're talking about, it is always a deeply contentious state. It's a swing state at heart. So when John Fetterman is winning this state, at least according to the polls, by six points, it really highlights his strength in this, in this, in this state. And it's not that he's been doing anything out of the ordinary. He has been doing what generally candidates are expected to do, although, yes, he has very eloquently utilized social media as a means to troll Dr. Oz. If you go onto his Twitter or Instagram, there is usually a daily meme or some silly video of Dr. Oz. Dr. Oz has been suffering from a huge image problem in Pennsylvania. I mean, first off, John Fetterman has been saying that Dr. Oz, number one, isn't from Pennsylvania. He says that Oz is from New Jersey, which is actually true. Dr. Oz has been a longtime resident of New Jersey, and it was a little unusual for him to just pick a Senate seat here in Pennsylvania to run for. And then they've also portrayed Mehmet Oz as an elitist of sorts, talking about fancy foods, or talking about the, about his mansions. That's something that, what John Fetterman wants to say, an average Pennsylvanian voter might not resonate with. But even as John Fetterman has been doing so well, Dr. Oz has actually been tightening the gap. He's been closing in on that gap, he's been closing in on that gap between him and Fetterman. So in September, around September 15th, the, Fetterman was at a high of 10.2%, with over 50% in polling, which is like a dream for any political candidate. But then, as time has gone on, now we're at October 6th, and now Fetterman only leads by six points. It's been closing, it's been closing very fast, actually, and it comes amid some more interesting and more beneficial polling numbers for Dr. Oz, who has been, yeah, he's been suffering from an image problem, but he has been using a lot of money in this race. And as we've established in previous episodes of this show, in something like a Senate election or governor election, money is a huge, huge factor in getting your message across. So Dr. Oz has been able to close that gap. Now, if I were to pick any of the swing seats, and there is a few, that Democrats are most likely to win, I would say that Pennsylvania is probably their best shot, because, number one, it's a retiring incumbent, so this is actually an open Republican-held seat, so Democrats just need to win this. It's not like they are just covering for a lost seat. This is a Republican retirement. Republicans are covering for a lost seat right now. So when you have a previously elected statewide official doing so well right now, six points, that is the margin, Democrats are a little more confident about getting this seat. And of all the seats that they have a possibility of winning and retaining, Pennsylvania looks like their best hope. But then let's take a look at a state that may not represent their best hopes or desires, and that's the state of Wisconsin. State of Wisconsin's Senate election is not that well-known, it's not been covered as much, at least on the Democrat side. It's been more about Senator Ron Johnson, who you might have heard about in cable news. Ron Johnson is a very MAGA Republican. He is in those, he is usually on Fox News Waves, he's talking about how he's proud to support the president, he's been kind of implicated in the January 6th Committee's investigation. He has also released, he's also suggested a few policies that would raise taxes on the middle class. He's done a few things to garner attention. And so, and then actually, another notable thing about Ron Johnson was that he promised not to run for reelection this year. Yeah, that's all. But Ron Johnson is an interesting figure to be running for this seat, not just because he is running as such a hard MAGA Republican in such a swing state like Wisconsin, but also because of, of everything that he's been caught up in, especially with the January 6 stuff. He has been making news headlines, or usually, if you were to, you know, look at it as a political consultant- Usually, if you were to, you know, look at it as a political consultant, if you were looking at this as a campaign manager, you'd think he's getting in the news for the wrong reasons. I mean, and if you're in the state of Wisconsin, that is. And Wisconsin, Wisconsin is one of the closest states in this country in terms of Republican and Democrat votership. It is practically 50/50. It is dead close. So, when you have a candidate that's a little more flamboyant in their politics, like Ron Johnson, you question how strong of a candidate he is. His Democratic opponent is also the Lieutenant Governor of his home state. His opponent is Lieutenant Governor Mandela Barnes. Now, Lieutenant Governor Barnes actually very commandingly won his primary in Wisconsin after every one of his Democratic rivals dropped out of the election. Now, Lieutenant Governor Barnes has not made as much headlines as Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman from Pennsylvania, but he has really demonstrated himself as one, as a Democrat to really watch in this, in this cycle, because if Democrats have their best shot in Pennsylvania, then Republicans want to put their best hopes in Wisconsin, and as do Democrats, because either one of these states, one of them just has to go blue, or one of them, excuse me, has to go red for Republicans to win their majority. Both of these have to go red, or blue, for Democrats to have their issue-proof majority. Right now, Senator Johnson, according to FiveThirtyEight, again, has a lead of only 2.9%. That is 49% to 46.6%. And I only say "only" because generally, that is a very small polling gap, but actually, now that I'm thinking about it again, this is Wisconsin. Wisconsin, if you have a 0.2% lead, you are doing a big job. So, right now, Senator Ron Johnson has been doing quite well. He has a 2.9% lead. He has a huge, he's very close to that 50% mark, and that would definitely be able to stir up some more notoriety for him in this state, and it does demonstrate that he has a command of the electorate there. And actually, since September 1st, Johnson has climbed three points, over three points, and Barnes has dropped by that same amount. On September 1st, if I can get the date here, yeah, Barnes was 3.8% ahead of Johnson, with 50.1% of the vote. Since then, Barnes has dropped to 46.9%, 46.3%, 46.7%, and Senator Johnson has climbed back up to 49.5%. So, the midterms for the state of Wisconsin are looking very red, but because we're seeing this shift back and forth, you really have to think about what might happen, like, maybe it's not as hard as set in stone, maybe it might flip back again. We're going to be watching that race, though. Anyway, those were the two races that I wanted to talk about in this week's midterm watch. These are probably the two most important Senate races that I would say you should care about, because if you're a Republican or a Democrat listening right now, these two states matter a lot, and their Senate seats are probably going to be the most contentious ones of this cycle. So I'd suggest you pay attention to Wisconsin and Pennsylvania. Senator Ron Johnson against Lieutenant Governor Mandela Barnes, and Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman against Dr. Oz. Thanks for joining us today. And so, that does it for us here today at the E'Shawn S. Show. If you liked my commentary, then go ahead and follow @E'ShawnSShow on Twitter and @theeshawnsshow on Instagram for breaking news posts and updates about the show. If you want to learn more about political stories, then check out my political news blog on theeshawnsshow.com, and enter in your email to subscribe, and just check out theeshawnsshow.com. And do us a favor and share this episode and all other E'Shawn S. Show content with your friends and family. It is the best way for this show to grow and get more people listening to it, and it helps out so much. Thanks again for all your support, and I'll see you guys soon. Bye.